Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, October 21st at 7:00 PM. Could we stand for the pledge?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just as strong.
Sorry, you good?
Yep.
Okay. I don't have any announcements today. Anything that anybody wishes to bring forward on the Citizens Forum? Seeing none.
I just wanted to thank you for coming this morning to the discussion, and I can't unfortunately say, but I did want to just ask if you have any concerns or unresolved or if there's any further discussion that we would have, comments you have, I just wanted to be here for that.
You can come on up, I guess, on the Citizens Forum, we can talk about it a little bit, you know, since we'll be weighing in on the, all the articles in the next two, two meetings, three meetings. No, I thought it was a good exchange down at the Senior Center today, both sides having a discussion about their views, their thoughts, and stuff like that. For those of folks that missed it, it was a good, I think, a lot of questions from the seniors, you know, and a good exchange from both sides and friendly, you know, friendly discussion. It's never easing, easier reading than any type of bylaw. I know I've, I've written them, I've, one of them, I lost them, I've got defeated on them, I've supported them, you know what I mean? So it's just trying to find that right balance with everything like that. And I think the more and more public's involved or aware and conversation happens and the more input from both sides, because you can find that happy medium that everything kind of works, you know, and I think that's always the benefit of it. I've seen towns where they've done bylaws in all different ones, you know, from zoning or from just general bylaws and things, and then they realize this isn't really what we want, or it goes in the other direction where maybe it's more regulations that they were desiring or more, or less regulation. So we don't know, you know, how it goes, but I think it's been helpful. I think, you know, those discussions and everything else you guys are working on, to get, you know, get the voice out there and get everybody's view. So the senior group is always appreciated, the folks coming down, they're more appreciated when you bring cookies or stuff like that and cupcakes. But no, I, next, I think it's just circling back with the moderator and stuff like that. I think you guys mentioned about amendments.
Yep.
I think it's just making sure that those are all shared and stuff like that.
I guess there's a couple of pieces of information that I would share here just for anybody who is watching or watches the replay, some highlights of some things that I hope we cleared up today. One is that there, there seems to be some misperception about permitting in town and what would or wouldn't be changing with these bylaws. So I just want to clarify that commercial farming is defined by the state as five acres or more if you license your farm as a commercial farm, and that does not require any permitting, and that between two and five acres, if you want to have a commercial farm, you can license it as such if you go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and apply for that permit, and you have to meet a threshold of, I believe it's a thousand dollars of income per year, I'm sorry, per acre in a year to qualify for that. And that is the only permitting that would come with a fee, and that already exists under the current zoning bylaws in Douglas. That's not something new that we're putting in place, and that currently, under the schedule of use in the zoning laws that we already have, there's no regulation, there's no permitting for hobby farming, so that there is nothing new that's occurring in terms of permitting under what we're proposing. And it seemed like there was some confusion about that by a couple of individuals today, so I just want to make sure that that's clear for everyone. And then another piece that seems like there's, you know, some, maybe some lack of clarity for some people on is the complaint process. There's nothing in what we're proposing that says that you can't complain. What we are suggesting is that we would encourage neighbors to talk to each other first before getting the town involved. There's a lot that can be resolved with a neighborly conversation, and we're looking ultimately to free up some resources for the Board of Health and the Animal Inspector and the AdCom if they come on board by not clogging up the works with things that could be resolved between two neighbors. If that doesn't fix it, then by all means, if you think that you have a valid legal complaint, file it, and then the Board of Health and the Animal Inspector and the potential AdCom will address it. And the, you know, the only piece that's really new there is we are doing a Freedom of Information Act type of requirement that we're adding in there, just so people know what's available to them, that if somebody does file repeated claims or complaints against a farmer, that if the Animal Inspector has been out to that property multiple times and the Board of Health has looked at it multiple times and it's been deemed as being all in compliance, that the farmer be allowed to ask the town, please give me a written record of those complaints and those findings. That is the extent of the language. So I just, I just wanted to state that kind of for anybody who's watching, to make sure that that's really clear, that there are valid complaints, and we're not advocating for suppressing of complaints or ignoring neighbor issues. There are legitimate issues, and, but we recognize that the Board of Health is currently struggling to address those adequately, and so that's where the AdCom is something that we want to bring a resource alongside the Board of Health that has the farming knowledge, so that we can address those valid complaints. We want to free up the resources by eliminating some of the complaints that have to do with your neighbor doesn't like that you have a farm, and that's not legally a valid complaint or repeated complaints. We're trying to clear the decks of some of those things that really aren't going anywhere, so that the Board of Health and the Animal Inspector and potentially the AdCom can focus their resources on addressing any actual valid complaints. And they, and they're rare, but they do come, come about every once in a while in town, and we absolutely want the town to have a good mechanism for addressing those. So those are just a couple of things that seem to, like, they've been a little contentious, and I want to make sure that all the information is accurate on that.
All right. Now, appreciate you coming tonight and speaking on it and stuff like that, and we'll...
Put a lot of effort in.
Yeah. See you the next, next few meetings and stuff like that, because we get the moderator and, you know, and then the town meeting from there. So appreciate your time.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks, and thank you again for coming this morning, I appreciate it. And you guys have been, have been great. Thank you for hosting us when we, you know, when we've been here, and we look forward to working with you more.
Okay. Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thanks, Laura.
Appreciate it. All right. Next up, number five, School Superintendent Paul coming before us regarding the schools, reconfiguration, grade reconfiguration, and study and discussion.
All right, how's everyone?
Good, Paul.
Again, for those watching at home, Paul Vieira, Superintendent of Schools.
Diana Landry, Business and Operation Manager of the schools.
Welcome, Diane. This is the first meeting, I think we've had you before, so just wanted to meet you and stuff like that.
Good to meet you as well.
Is it Diane or Diana?
Diana.
Diana. Nice to meet you. So one thing we're looking at, I sound like looking at, is a grade reconfiguration, and I'll tell you a little bit about what that looks like and the why behind it. One thing I was clear to the school committee and in an email I sent out to the community, I think I forwarded it also here, is I wanted you to be transparent when, when I'm doing this. You can't have these conversations about investigating a potential grade reconfiguration without being transparent and open to people. So I sent something out, told people I've made a decision. That's what this exploratory study is about, to try to see where we're going and what we might do. So the thought process is this, is to move the first grade out of the primary into the elementary, move the fifth grade from the elementary to the middle, and move the eighth grade from the middle to the high school. All right? So basically move one grade up. And it's really bookended by two different things. The first is the need at the primary school to increase our preschool classrooms. Currently, we have three preschool classrooms. We have one three-year-old classroom and two four-year-old classrooms. Our early intervention numbers are skyrocketing. What early intervention means is families who have children under the age of three can get them tested for special education, and if they qualify, they can come to school in preschool for free, is the gist of it. If you look at our numbers, in '22, we had five students tested. In '23, we had eight. In '24, we had 13, and in '25, we had 17 students tested for early intervention. And the students that have become eligible for, to come to school, have gone from five to three to seven to eight. So we've seen an increase in the number of three-year-olds who are being tested and the number of three-year-olds who are eligible to attend preschool, and all we have is one classroom. The other thing is we've seen an increase in the type of needs of students. You go back three, four, five, six years, a lot of the kids were being identified with moderate special needs, kids for OT, PT, speech, language, so on and so forth. The kids we're seeing now who are qualifying and becoming eligible are highly autistic, are nonverbal, are behavioral, it's a different type of need. And to put all kids in just one classroom is tough, so we need the space to expand, to add for early intervention. The other piece is, we have a waitlist of parents who just want to attend our preschool. If you look at the three-year-old waitlist, in '22, it was 12 kids, in '23, it was eight, in '24, it was eight, in '25, it was five, and then in this year, it's 10. And for the four-year-olds, it's been two, eight, seven, two, and this year, only one. So again, the need for just, for the community to have preschool is there. We don't have the space, so that's a thought process in moving the first grade over to the elementary school to free up four classrooms. The other piece is eighth grade moving to the high school. And this really comes back to the whole BVT conversation and the BVT discussion. So just some quick numbers for you, and I got this from Anthony Steele at BVT. The average across the valley of students applying to BVT is 42% of each grade level is applying to BVT from eighth grade to go to BVT. That's across the 13 communities. Here in Douglas, over the past five years, we've ranged between 50 and 64% of our kids applying, so we're higher than the average of 13 communities. The acceptance rate is about 10%, less than that, so it's between 40% to 55% of our kids who apply who are actually going. Robert Rangetta, High School Principal, reached out to some local schools, and over a six-year period, here are three schools who moved their eighth grade to the high school, and what they saw for a decrease in students going. Uxbridge did this in 2019, and they saw the average decrease by 34%. They went from about 29 kids going to BVT to 19. Garner did this in 2016, and they saw a 75% decrease over a six-year period, from an average of 12 to three. And Greenfield did this way back in 2010, and they saw a 72% decrease from about 32 kids to nine students. So over the past few weeks, we've been able to get in touch with Akushnit, Bellingham, Belmont, Belricker, Bourne, Carver, Garner, Granby, Hanover, Hope Dale, Hull, Mashpee, Milford, Northbridge, Sandwich, Uxbridge, West Bridgewater, Westport Public Schools, just to have conversations with them, some of it for the Early Childhood Center, but a lot of it around the eighth grade to the ninth grade move. And some of the themes that have come back from these schools is that it's been a positive in that eighth grade has had the ability to have access to different types of academics, predominantly in Algebra I and in World Language, and they have the ability to participate in more extracurricular activities. The schools who've said they've been successful with it have done it by creating an eighth grade academy, not just having the eighth grade fully integrated into the high school, but still having their own middle school type of pocket, having their own PE classes, having their own lunches, and still having that eighth grade feel before they launch into the high school. Planning, communication, and logistics, as we all know, is important. Figuring out how to integrate them into the school culture and climate is an important piece, and then working with the social emotional well-being of kids as they transition and doing that. Some things that people brought up for concerns were, were the eighth graders mature enough to be at the high school? And again, we looked, and I just rattled off about 15 schools who had, the first time you do it, it's tricky, but over time, it lessens. The loss of being the oldest grade in the school, well, it'll be now in the seventh grade as opposed to the eighth grade. Making sure you can schedule it, making sure you can staff it, making sure, you can do that is important. The parent and the community resistance, a lot of it comes around the busing, putting a fifth grader on the bus with eighth graders, putting an eighth grader i- in a high school. So that's all about communication. And then finally, the behavioral concerns is can eighth, our eighth grade is going to be able to behave appropriately in, in the high school. So those are just some of the things we've looked at. I'm going to continue having conversations with teachers. I've met with eighth grade staff, a bunch of, met with teachers in other buildings. We're doing research with, with other schools just to hear about it, and the big thing is, can we afford it? Is it another piece? Because I'm not going to move four first-grade classrooms to the elementary school if I can't staff those first-grade classrooms with preschool teachers, because that's the whole point of it. So are we going to be able to add preschool teachers? The other thing that both Bob O'Brien at the middle school and Robert Rangetta is doing at the high schools with this grade reconfiguration, will we need more staff or different staff at the middle school and high school to make it work? And that's part of what they're looking at and crunching their, their numbers. For just something as simple as, if you move the eighth grade to the high school, every eighth grader has to take PE. Can the current PE staff absorb the additional 60, 70, 80, 90 kids? Every eighth grader is going to have to take art. Can the current art teacher absorb those 60, 70, 80 kids in taking art? So that's what they're looking at and diving into now. And I just wanted to come before the Board of Selectmen, let them know that we're doing this, we're investigating it, and I know you're ready to ask a question, so.
So, just, just for our education, I just want to go, so the new configuration at the primary school?
Pre-K, K.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay. And then the elementary would be one through four, and then the middle school's five through seven?
Seven.
And eight through 12.
Correct.
So it's interesting with the, some towns have done, like, almost like a pre-K1 and pre-K2 and stuff like that. There's a program called, I think it was Kennedy Donovan, that looked at the early educational of, of kids that were in the pre-K, that were struggling with different challenges, you know, with tongue tides, learning disabilities, things like that, or just early onset, so to get them ready for that early thing. So that, you know, you're going to have a lot of, I guess, space available and stuff like that? You know, with that primary school, in the, in the configuration that you're changing this out, what's the thoughts of, to do when the additional spaces you're reconfiguring things around?
The, the thought would be to add additional preschool classrooms. So, yeah, we're looking at some, some different options down at the primary school, but if we're going to add one or two or three preschool classrooms over the next one, two, three, four years, currently, we might have to do some different things to, to make that happen. So moving the first grade to the elementary school frees up four classrooms for us to be able to do that.
Okay.
We also, again, one of the things, we rent out space to a before and after-school program at the primary school. So one of the things we're looking at is, can we move that program to the elementary school, thus freeing up two classrooms at the primary school, which would then potentially could allow for us to keep the first grade in the primary school and use those two classrooms that we are currently using for before and after-school care to house the preschool, the additional preschool teacher, with the idea that if we build it, we have to get two or three or four preschool classrooms at it. At some point, the, the first grade would have to move over. But those are one of the things we're looking into. And again, they need to do, they have to look at their accreditation and making sure that they have sinks, they're close to bathrooms, you know, one of the questions was...
The heights.
One of the questions was, you know, if we put the preschool, if we put the before and after-school on the third floor, can the kids go up and down the three flights of stairs? So just looking at, at all that during the study.
Okay. Because I, so I think I could tell you, from when I attended this, this building, this school, it was seventh and eighth grader together up to 12, straight through. So it didn't change until we added the new high school, and it, you know, and that configuration still in the high school was sixth through eighth on the first floor, and then nine through 12 on the upper floors at the, now we're, we're middle schools, you know, in that configuration. So, no, I think it's, it's worthwhile.
The law exists, yeah.
Well, and I commend you for testing it. I mean, looking at some of our numbers here, I mean, we need to, we need to shift and shift.
Correct.
Things quickly. I wholeheartedly support this. The bus situation's already been, you know, you're not changing that. The same people are going to ride the same bus.
Correct.
An extra class is going to wait a little longer, I assume, to go to the high school, or maybe the high school gets dropped out first, but that, you know.
The bus thing, we can figure out. The, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit once we're done about the new BVT lottery system and what they're doing to try to make things a little bit more financially stable for, for communities after we answer questions on this.
Yeah, I ended up pulling this just to share with the board, but this was the last 10 years of enrollment in the school, so I think we had a, had a high of, you know, in 2013 of 1,596 students, and then we've been kind of hovering around 1,100.
1,100, correct.
You know, 80 and stuff like that, so.
We, we did a study with Nezdek.
Yeah.
And they have us going, in about six or seven years, they have us going up about 75 kids. We're about 1050 now. They have us going up to about 1,125, 1,150 in another six, seven years, but, correct. But that's a trend that I think most schools, especially in the valley, have seen that decrease in, in enrollment.
So where are they going then?
That's a good question. Or they're just not.
Well, you mentioned something that kind of raised the eyebrow on me was the retention, the 65%, 50%, when you bring in the eighth grade to the high school, you have less, I don't know, was it application or?
Yeah, the school districts that have moved the eighth grade, now, some of the schools who I mentioned, their seventh and eighth grade have been part of their high school for decades. Like, we contacted Mashpee Public Schools. Mashpee used to be a K through six district, and they school choice their kids over to Falmouth. So when they built that Mashpee High School, whatever it was, 25 years ago, they built it as a seven through 12 school. So it's always been seven through 12. I reached out to West Bridgewater. West Bridgewater's been a seven through 12 building for 25 years. So when you ask them, did it work? What were the pitfalls of it? They're like, Paul, that was 30 years ago.
Yeah.
That we did it. So we tried also to get in touch with schools who've done it recently in the past four, five, six years. And again, they said it's, I talked to Bourne, I believe it was Wednesday, Thursday of last week, they're in a similar boat. They, they built their high school for about 600, 700 kids, and they're down to about 300. So they're looking to do the same exact thing as that retention, to keep kids in. So the hope is that if the kids in the eighth grade are at the high school and a part of the high school community and are with our teachers, the, the lure to apply to BVT might lessen because they've already built those inroads at the high school.
Want to say that there.
Correct.
Kind of a question maybe off, canter, I guess. I know the high school had a work-study program, and every year my phone would ring for 26 years. This year it didn't.
Okay, I'll look into that.
Just, just curious.
Yeah.
Because I usually got two or three scratched in the door, you know?
Yeah, and I think, you know, you guys looked into the, you know, college prep and stuff like that, and tying it to colleges and stuff like that.
We're exploring a few things. We, we are, we're in the process of potentially entering into a partnership with Anna Maria College, still in the preliminary stages of doing a dual enrollment program with Anna Maria, with the hope that our kids can take classes at Douglas High School and get college credit for it. Still in the preliminary phase, but that conversation's, you hear about the dual enrollment forever, and it starts and it stops. This one's starting to get a little more traction than I've seen in, in recent years, so that's, that's exciting. I'll talk a little bit about the BVT, about the new lottery system. Are people familiar with that? Have they heard? Do you know anything about it?
Slightly.
I'm anxious to hear what I have to say.
You're anxious to hear what I have to say?
Because we've, we've heard rumors.
Okay, so he, these are the rumors, these are facts. So the BVT is going to a full lottery system, okay? So as, what they were doing in the past was, they had, they had, you got certain amount of points for academics, certain amount of points for attendance, so on and so forth, and they had a cut score of, let's say, 85. So they took, you had above an 85, you got in. If you got below an 85, you didn't. Now what they're doing is they're going to a weighted lottery. Every kid has the ability to earn up to four tickets. Here's what you have to do to get a ticket. For one ticket, you have to apply. To get a second ticket, all you have to do is apply. To get a second ticket, you have to have less than 27 absences over 270 days, which means half of eighth grade and all of seventh grade, you have to have missed less than 27 days, which is less than 10% of the year. Third thing you have to do...
That feels like a lot. I, I know it's not in this day and age, but I can't imagine 27 and a half days.
Yeah, because if a child misses 25 days in a school year, don't they stay back?
Kids don't stay back, but if you're, if you're absent over 10% of the year, it's chronically absent. It's a lot of days. If you think of a school year as 10 days, you go a year and a half to 16 days, you're basically missing 1.5 days a month, not a high bar. Third thing, and again, these are not my words, you can, you can, if you have not committed a felony in school, you get a ticket. You can commit a felony outside of school, but if you commit, if, as long as you have not committed a felony inside of school, you get a third ticket. Told you you'd like this, Matt.
What do we have to do to commit a felony?
Correct, and the fourth...
At eighth grade.
And the fourth ticket you get if you attend a virtual tour, an in-person tour, or request information. So you get four tickets. They're going to, if there are 100 kids that apply, they're going to throw in 400, and every kid gets four tickets, they're going to throw in four tickets, and then they're going to pull the names, number one, number two, number three, number four, number five, all the way down to number 100. And that's how they're going to do their, their lottery.
So really, everything's going to be determined by the lottery in most cases, just drawing it?
They're going to draw it, so it's...
Everybody's going to be in it.
Everyone's going to be in it. The other thing that they're doing, and I think he has this approved by his school committee last week, is Anthony noticed that the, it was unpredictable for towns to know how many kids were going to go to BVT, and it was a budget buster in many things. So one thing he did, and again, this is his presentation, so I'm just the mouthpiece, is what he's doing is, he's trying to get it to a point where towns can predict the maximum amount of applicants they're going to take per school year, okay? So what, what he did was, is, and I'll just use Douglas's numbers, we have 120 students currently at BVT. Based off of our population, we should only have 70 kids at BVT for a delta of 50. He wants to spread that out over a 10-year period and lessen the applicants by five a year, by adjusting based off of population. He said for Douglas, we're currently at about 33 kids a year going to BVT, and he wants to set the cap at about...
Go ahead.
And he wants to set the cap at about 28 students a year for BVT. They're not looking to put a hard cap on it, but he said, at least this way you know it's going to be 28, 29, 30, but those fluctuations are going up to 40 will not happen.
Okay. So in the enrollment that the BVT took from Douglas for 2022, was 25 students, 28% of the class, of the eighth grade class. For '23, it was 32 students, 31%. For '24, it was 34 students, 34% of the grade, the eighth grade for Douglas. And then last year, it was 40 students and 38%.
Correct.
Leaving you guys with 64 students.
Like I said, we, we've been averaging between 50 and 60 kids apply, between 50% and 64% of the class apply with about 10% less, which brings you at your 40 to 50%. Correct.
Yeah. So, yeah, I, I think, you know, you know, there has to be that conversation about that, you know, both, you know, how, how does a school survive versus, you know, losing almost, you know, a good chunk of their numbers, you know, in business, and you know, if I lost 35% of my business, you know, or, you know, expected incoming revenue, you know, it's tremendous, you know?
Across the valley, 40% of the kids, the average is 40% across the valley, from Milford to Grafton to Douglas to Milbury, the average is 41% of students who apply are going to BVT. So we're, we're always going to be at that 20, 30. The hope would be to go from where we're at at about, you know, 120 kids, or let's call it just for simple math, 30 kids a grade level. If we can get that down to 15, 20 kids a grade level who are going... who are going and get that influx of five, six, seven, 10 extra kids staying in town. And what is it, about $15,000?
Is it 15? 13 stuck in my head, but.
I'd be using 15 because it's easy to multiply by 10 and get to 150.
Well, yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, 13% is the makeup of, of the amount of students Douglas is sending in the BVT of their makeup.
We are the, I think if, we are if not the smallest, the second smallest community out of the 13 communities enrollment-wise to BVT, and we're setting the highest or the second highest percentage of kids to BVT. Correct. Oh, yeah.
The challenge for this year.
Which is, no.
Senior class, the Douglas seniors at BVT are 25. So if he admits 35, and the freshman here, it's a net of 10.
He said he's gonna cap it at 28.
This year.
For, for the FY '27 school year. Wants to put this in place for next year.
Well, 26 enrollment. Yeah.
Yeah. And the reason he's saying 28 is, he's like, obviously I have to fill my, my 300 slots. So if we accept 28 students from, from Douglas and all of a sudden, let's say, three juniors go back to their home communities, and those three students are all from the plumbing department, and the only applicants in the plumbing department are kids from Douglas, then I'm gonna take those three plumbing kids and your 28 might go to 31.
But, you know, our, our population in the school is supposed to hover around 6.5% to 7%, and now we're at 13.
I'll show you what he told.
I'm just, I, I've looked at all the numbers. You know what I mean? And I've got the numbers actually from BVT.
Yeah.
And analyzed them and gone through everything. So, yeah, it, it's gotta be a little more, you know, we, we shouldn't be the second or the third largest enrollment number or percentage compared to the Grafton, the Milford, you know, the bigger communities.
And Milford's in the process of going, of building a new high school, and they're gonna put in a voc wing in there. So the number of kids going from Milford to BVT is going to lessen, which means they're going to try to pull from other communities.
Have you done any analysis on, you know, you know, the kids that are leaving? Was the purpose and stuff like that? Is it because of college prep or college courses or things like that? You mentioned Anna Maria, because I think that was some of the early analysis might have fed into that?
As doing part of this, I just put a survey together. I sent it out to principals and to our guidance department, I believe, last week for them to look at. We're gonna push that out to families, a true survey to get information. Everything that we've received is anecdotal. And some of it goes everywhere from, we don't want to pay the $300 for user fees, to you don't offer field hockey, to we just want to change. We've been in this small town for so long, we want to be able to be exposed to other kids. It, everything's been anecdotal, but we're gonna push a survey out probably in another week or two, or two to three weeks, to families to try to get something. We're gonna do it with, we're gonna do it with kids who are at BVT, we're gonna do it with families, and we're also gonna try to push it out to people who maybe made some different choices to get some, some additional, additional data points.
I'm having, I'm trying to find fault in the logic of the lottery. It seems, you know, for lack of a better word, pretty pure. You disagree?
I guess it kind of depends. It's a lottery, right? So you're gonna get results within a range around the center of the bell curve. Some years you might be underrepresented, some years you'll be overrepresented.
Correct.
So one of my questions to the new superintendent will be, what if you're overrepresented and you have a soft cap? Your soft cap's 28, but you, you run your little, you pull 35 ping pong balls that are Douglas. You tell seven kids they can't go, or are you going to just stick with the 35?
So what he's going to do is if 60 kids apply to BVT from Douglas, he's gonna rank order 1 through 60, and 28 are going to get in. So those 28 will, will get in. If numbers 4, 8, and 22 decide not to go, then he'll call number 29, 30, and 31.
So I just wanna square, I'm sorry to be redundant, but I'm trying to, you said they were gonna try to do this over 10 years.
So what he's going to do is, so right now there are 100, the number's 120 is what he came with. And he knows that.
Of the overall total number.
Correct. And he said that based off of our population, we should have 70 kids at BVT, 70 students at BVT. So in order not to whack communities all in one year, and I told him it was fine if he did, but he didn't, he didn't agree. He said he wants to slowly trickle that out. And he said, over a 10-year period, if your numbers stay consistent and we take five less kids each year, by year 10, you'll be at your 70 based off of population. And he says what he'll do is, as, if for instance, we build a new development and 250 kids move in, he'll adjust that number. And if some years, you know, if you look at some of our numbers, some years we've sent 65 kids to BVT, other years we've sent, I'm sorry, 65% of the years we've sent, 42%. So it's gonna adjust every four years off of that. So that 120 is off of this year's numbers. Next year he might go off, it might be off 117. The year after that, it might be off of 125. But he's, he's gonna, we asked for a copy of the presentation. He said, I need to present to my school committee before I share it publicly.
But they've taken behavior, academics, and some of the intangibles off the.
Off the table.
So I think that's gonna, that's gonna lose the allure of being an honors thing. Couple that with the move for the eighth grade, I think Douglas is gonna punch above its weight again pretty soon. What, um, will the eighth graders in the high school get the full high school experience with the winter carnivals and the proms? And how does that work?
We haven't got, we haven't, we haven't got, we haven't got that far. We, we want to make sure that the eighth grade still, i- if this happens, we want to make sure the eighth grade has that experience. Probably gonna be pretty firm, and I would imagine Rob and Ed's getting pretty firm, that eighth grader should not be going to a senior prom.
That makes sense. Yeah.
So do, do, doing that, they'll still have the eighth grade dance. It's still, we're having the eighth grade come up for homecoming events and for spirit week events, so they'll be part of that. We still want them to have that eighth grade team feel. So continue with those traditions and find ways to integrate them into the high school. So when we have pep rallies, it would be eight through 12 pep rally. They're part of our sports team, so when we have sports nights, they, they would do that. When we have class events or, you know, student senate, student council, they, Douglas, they'd be representative of that. But we'd still want an eighth grade dance just for eighth graders and, or maybe do eighth, ninth grade. But that stuff that Rob is, if we get to that point, going, going to iron out.
Yeah, I get the senior prom.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
The school winter carnival and things that really build that school community is really nice. I'm sure that you, the pros will.
Yeah.
Find a nice balance there, but I'm all for that. I think it's great.
Yeah. Good stuff. And one of the things I noticed, you mentioned Hopedale, it was one of the ones that did this and stuff like that. Hopedale, I saw them on 146, they actually have a little school bus van shuttle, which is kind of cool and stuff like that, community there, some of their students around. Sorry, on 146 the other, other day. So.
What was it?
Hopedale. Hopedale School minivan and stuff like that. And they're moving students, taking them from the school or wherever to.
Yeah, I know, I know. Hopedale has one, Milbury has one a lot before. It's just like you, you, we have one in town for the senior center. They, they have that van for sporting events, for field trips, for, for different things. So I'd love to have one. It's about a two to three-year waitlist to get them.
Oh, for the little, this was, to tell you, it's like a passenger van, you know? If you talk to Hopedale, you know what I mean? Hopedale's one of the schools that has got eighth grade up. But they, no, it was a passenger van, school lights and stuff like that, really convenient and stuff like that.
Was it a minivan or was it like a?
Minivan.
School bus?
Minivan. Yeah.
Like 15 people?
No, like, um, six. You know what I mean? But they're utilizing it for, you know, purpose and stuff like that, which is.
Because I think when you go over 12, you have to get a CDL license. It gets a little complicated. Yeah.
Cool. All right. Appreciate it.
What do you think?
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diana.
Thanks. Sweet. All right. Next up is the DLS reports for the town of Douglas, operation position discussion. Jean's in the room, so she can always weigh in on this. What I, I came across a website, I just wanted to throw it in our packets. It's in our section six here. I pulled together similar-sized towns. So Douglas is in here. I don't know, I wanna thank you, Lisa, for printing these in, in color. But I think it's just really, Hopedale's in here, Rutland, Lester, again, similar three precinct towns. A lot of good takeaways. One of the things I thought, you know, I'll just kind of highlight, you know, certified free cash. I was kind of blown away, like Dudley only had $200,000 in certified free cash. But Douglas is doing much, much well, thanks to our, our folks leading, leading the charge and stuff. The other one was the, the free cash percentage to the budget. Douglas maintains a good 10%, which is a strong position. And I thought that was really good. I saw towns, and I'll give you, you know, Dudley was at 1%, Oxford 5%, Hopedale was 3.8%, and Rutland was about 3, 3.5%. So, but I just wanted to share that with board members, these reports, because it's, it's interesting when you see them and take a look and do some comparison of similar towns. And the only other one was the stabilization funds and stuff like that. You had quite a few communities that were, were about one, Jean would hold me to truth, 1.9 in the stabilization fund roughly. Give or take? Something like that on the report was. But yeah, outside of Oxford, Oxford had about 2.4 million roughly, plus or minus. But a lot of the towns were hovering right around a million dollars. So.
Town's policy says stabilization is 5% of the operating budget. So when you look at that.
Oh, it, it was, yeah, and we were, yeah, we were right around there. So that, that was great. Concerning when I see other towns, and, and that's why I wanted to do the comparison and share it with the reports, nothing more than that. I thought it was just really educational and insightful, you know what I mean? And shows were, you know, making, doing well on that, on that front, right? Managing and the operation end of it. So kudos. That's all. I came across the website and I was like, oh, that's pretty cool. And wanted to share it. Nothing more than that. Any, anything else? I think you guys can take a gander through that.
So the only note, when I looked at the charts, is just take note of the scale on the vertical axis is different. So the DLS website automatically tries to make it visually centered. In other words, they don't apply one standard vertical scale for every town that you pull off their reporting system. They're gonna make it so that the graph fills the space.
Yeah.
So when you look at Hopedale's certified free cash, my eyesight isn't the greatest, but I believe that vertical scale goes up to 1.5 million.
Yep. Correct.
But for Douglas, the chart looks exactly the same, but the vertical scale is 4 million.
Yeah.
So it's, you just gotta be sensitive to the fact that those scales are changing. So if you put all those communities on the same scale with us, you would see.
I wish it had a function where you could do a compare. That would be pretty cool to say.
You can. You're gonna go through several clicks to get to it, but it is there.
Yeah. Again, the fact that the data's there and looking at similar-sized communities, it's worthwhile. So. Good stuff. All right. Yeah. There's just a pleasant from there. Anything else? You good? All right. Good deal. Ross, you good? We'll roll forward. We're gonna skip number seven since Mike's not here. Number eight, we'll review and sign the special town meeting warrant and possible votes. So.
We should start off by saying we pulled some things out.
Yeah.
Going to be ready, because I just don't like the idea of rushing. So Article 14.
Article 14 is the land donation.
The land donation.
Beat B Street.
Yep, yeah, B Street. Yep.
So there's due diligence that we should do, or at least talk about how that would be structured before we accept a piece of real estate. So we put that off. And I'm gonna ask that we pull off the cannabis bylaw. I think what we'll do is put the cannabis bylaw on for the spring ATM. We will get a compliant policy to take us from now, the end of this year, to spring, just to calm the nerves at CCC.
Yeah.
With something that's compliant, and then we'll actually go to a town meeting in the spring. Legal counsel's working on this, has a draft, but couldn't get it to us until Friday. And I just think it's too compressed. And people want to read stuff, they want to understand it. This'll give us a couple of extra months to, to run it by.
It makes sense. I mean, anytime, especially with that stuff, if we rush it and then we figure out we got a big hole or gap in anywhere. So makes sense.
Is that it that we took off?
Yep.
Yep. Has anything else really changed? Do we?
No, everything else should be, you know, seen at first. Oh, sorry, the maps were included. They weren't in the first.
Oh, yeah.
First draft.
Yep. Yep, yep. The, the funding for Article 12, is that from free cash that we figured initially?
So the numbers have changed. What's 12 there?
12 is the 104 Main Street demolition for the.
So that, that's free cash.
Okay. Okay. I know it was just discussion on that. All right.
I went way high on that one, by the way.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what all is there.
Yep.
And what somebody would, so I just, I didn't want to have to come back for more, so I just went way high on it.
Yeah. And I think that was fair, because then you can, you can transfer, you know, an upcoming meeting and whatever's the remainder's left over. So it makes sense.
In terms of the order of the articles, I just, there is a bylaw in Douglas. I want to make sure everybody understands. This obviously came up in the distant past. But in Douglas.
Yep.
Town meeting may only entertain a motion to reconsider a prior action. During that timeframe, while the next, so let's say you have Article 1 passes.
Yep.
And you move on to Article 2. If somebody wants to reconsider Article 1, they have to make that motion before Article 2 is dealt with. Because once Article 2 is finished, you cannot go back to Article 1. And for those of us who've been around the block, there are these, not Douglas, but another town where I was familiar with, where there was a motion to reconsider something that had happened earlier in town meeting. A lot of people had left. A specific group of people in town went around to all the soccer fields, got a whole bunch of voters to show up at the end of town meeting and voted a rather grand amount for the schools. And everybody who was there said, wait a minute, we already did the budget. And because it was open all the way through, they got snookered basically by people who knew the rules better. But Douglas, you can't do that. So the motion to reconsider is, is out of order if it is made after the next article is disposed of. It's hard to explain it, but I think my example makes it clear. After Article 2 is done, you can't reconsider Article 1. So.
Some towns you can go through the, almost to the end of the warrant and then reconsider, I believe, until the town meeting's closed.
Some towns.
Some towns. Yeah.
And in a lot of our larger legislative bodies, the one way to make action final is to make the motion to reconsider immediately after the item is dealt with.
And then get.
Someone moves to lay that on the table, and you can't take the motion to reconsider off the table after that. So all action is final. That's a very US Senate way of doing things. But parliamentarily, it's possible. But it just gets complicated. People don't know the rules, so they're just telling you there's another option. But by bylaw, there is a point of the meeting which the action is final.
No, I was, I was in a neighboring community and they had a book from 1975, and they had. had, I want to, don't quote me, 350 articles over two nights. So, Town of Webster, the 1975, 350 articles, two night event. So we're fortunate to have 12 and they, yeah, we're very fortunate to have 12 articles, so I can only imagine what that was like back in the day, so, all right.
So the reiterating, what you were saying, is reconsideration has to be before the next article is closed?
Yep.
For the previous article.
Because this is my life lately, I'm going to go get the book, I'm going to come back, and I'm going to give you the actual chapter and verse. You can move on to about something else.
Okay. So we have, how many copies assigned?
Seven.
Seven copies? Do we need to...
Yeah, we can do that after.
We'll do that after? Okay, and Mike can, yeah, swing by the sign?
Yep.
It'll be posted. All right.
I have a little bit free.
Yeah. Motion to sign?
Yeah.
Sure. What do you think? We'll do a motion to sign?
Yeah.
Entertained a motion to sign the special town meeting warrant and fall town meeting warrant? All right, motion by Ross, seconded by Hal, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, we can sign that away, and Matt's got the section. I did, just before you read that, I was at a town meeting where that did happen, and it was interesting because everybody was like, ah, and then after, they're like, okay, made the motion, so.
Article 1, Section 9 of the Douglas general bylaws, conveniently it's on page nine of this book. Reconsideration on any matter determined by voice vote or standing vote may be had by a motion therefore submitted to the moderator prior to completion of action on the article and the warrant acted upon next subsequent to the article sought to be reconsidered. Very legalese way of saying what I just said. Said motion for reconsideration and reconsideration, if any, shall then become the next order of business. So, that's, that's how your town works, it's a good rule actually, so that, once people have had their fill of the issue that they care the most about, after the next article is dealt with, they can, they can leave and they won't have to fear that their action will be undone.
Okay. Next up, meeting minutes, we have two meeting minutes in our packet, September 2nd and September 16th. All right, motion by Tim, seconded by Hal, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's the 9-2, we've got 9-16, right? This is the next one.
Motion to approve the September 16 minutes.
All right, motion by Tim, seconded by Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and on to number 10, Town Administrator's Report.
So Mr. Chairman, I specifically flagged the retiree health insurance renewal discussion item, because if anybody is interested in this topic, they would have seen it on the agenda, may have tuned in or will watch later, read the minutes. Retiree health insurance for the town is a January plan, so it renews on January 1st, so that business is being placed right now for renewal, and there'll be an open enrollment session. This coincides with the federal schedule for Medicare, so obviously it makes sense. We offer a Medicare Advantage Plan through Aetna, and Medicare Advantage is under a significant amount of pressure, both in Washington and with the insurance companies. Basically, to simplify it a little bit, Medicare Advantage has been subsidized and supported by congressional action with the establishment of trust funds, and the subsidy is drawn from those trust funds, and supported Medicare Advantage. So Medicare Advantage became a very popular product with retirees. Those subsidies are being changed in Washington, and they're being reduced. The trust funds began to show losses and financial pressure, and thus the cost shifting is coming back onto beneficiaries with select Medicare Advantage, especially in the group plans. So, by law, under Chapter 32B of the Massachusetts General Laws, we have to offer a retiree plan for our retirees, and we pay the smallest percentage allowed by law, which is 50% of the premium cost. Years back, 10, 12 years ago, the premium for Douglas's retiree insurance coverage was $420, $430 a month per member. And the town went out to market and ended up with Tufts, and Tufts was in the high 300s. When we moved to Aetna, we had two significant forces, so we were part of the Massachusetts Strategic Health Group, and they gave us two forms of incentive, or a break if you will. Aetna did not have a presence in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and was looking for market entry, and therefore offered a juicy rate to MSHG to sell into their product, and so they would have market share. So that's a common business practice. To sweeten the pot a little bit, they did two things, they gave us a rate cap, so it could only go so much every, every year, and the more people we enrolled, we got, you know, like $10 off. So as we hit enrollee milestones, we would get $10 off per member per month. So, our enterprising brokerage team went out and got the city of Fall River to be part of our block and several other large joint purchasing groups. So it ended up that MSHG was the single largest Medicare Advantage purchasing block in the Commonwealth, and it was an Aetna domain. So we were, last year we paid $337 per member per month. With MSHG kind of falling apart, Fall River's gone their own way, a bunch of other groups have gone their own way, and now Aetna's putting the price pressure, we're kind of like, we're catching up to where we should have been, and then we're going to face the price pressure. So the rate that we're looking at this year, apples to apples, same plan, is $551.64 per member per month, which is a 68.2% increase. It is however, competitive with other group benefit rates being charged around the Commonwealth for a product that's actually a lesser product. So, because we are required to offer the product, we're going to offer this product under the same conditions that we have today. So we have retiree first, which is a concierge service that is added on, you don't call into Aetna, you call your caseworker at retiree first, they hook you up with your, with your care, with all the benefits that are in it. And I won't discourage people from looking at their options, the whole idea is provide a benefit that's important to people, I just want to make a couple of things clear. One is, if you go on the exchange as a retiree and you buy your own, you may or may not save all that per member per month charge. There are plans out there, some of them are offered by Aetna, where your Part B premium for Medicare is paying for your Medicare Advantage Plan. Couple of things you got to know. One is, you have an out-of-pocket maximum on the exchange, it might be $9,550 bucks for the Signature Plus Plan. Douglas's is zero, so you're paying monthly premium, but your out-of-pocket exposure is zero, so you know what you're going to pay every month, whereas you may pay nothing and make out like a bandit for two or three years, then you get sick, right? So then, now it's going to, it's going to start hitting you out of pocket, not worth standing the rest of your coverage. The other thing is customer service. I know, everybody says the Advantage, you can, the exchange, you can call a number and get, it's just not the same as having what we provide on the group side. So it's not apples to apples, it's apples to oranges. So, sometimes people get burned when they save the almighty buck. You got to know yourself and be truthful with yourself about yourself. If you know you're going to have repeated run-ins with the medical system, buying on the exchange versus our plan may not be the best idea for you. The other thing is, once you leave us, you can't come back. So that is a policy of the Town of Douglas. So it's, it's not an open market where you can leave the Douglas group plan, go get your own plan on the exchange, then say, oh, next year, I'm going to go back. No, the door is closed. And there's, the reason for that is, we can't go out for renewal if we don't know what our census is. So we need to know what our commitment is, at least, before going into open enrollment, you have a sense of what your population is. But if there's going to be a lot of the volatility back and forth, then we can't get a rate because they don't know what they're covering. So that's part of the dynamic of being a group negotiated plan versus not. Not every retiree, obviously, is retiring at the top three years of a high salary. We have quite a few folks that are working class folks, that are clerks, or highway workers, or they may not have gotten too far into the step progress, maybe they only worked for the town for 10 years, only got to step 10, so their highest three years are not the highest three on their chart, and may not be the highest chart of all of our charts. So yeah, it's fixed income, it's a, it's a pretty big shock, and we're very sensitive to that. We're in a position where we might want to make a change, not for this January, but for the following January, at least give people maybe an option, a lower cost option if they want to go to it. For this year, it was darn near impossible to get anybody even to quote us, so we did the best we could. We are still with MSHG, so the broker of record for MSHG is NFP, not Alliant, and it's not us as town officials, it's NFP, the broker of record for MSHG. And they assure me they've, they've done their homework, they sharpen their pencils, and this is the rate they got. And they didn't announce it until pretty darn near close to the deadline, so they were actually after October 1st when they told us, but we're kind of trapped now. To place our business between now and December 1st is pretty much impossible.
Is there a way, just a question, because you mentioned about, once you leave, you can't come back. Is there a way of, if someone makes that decision coming in, in September and saying, hey, I left this year, you know, and, but I really want to be back in the, in the pool in Jan, you know, January when things open up? I get they can't wait till that lasts, because you know, there's usually open enrollment.
All policies can be changed, right? But there are some significant policy reasons why our policy is written this way, so we can put that on a future agenda and talk about it, but...
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm just trying to create, people make mistakes, you know what I mean, and then create some flexibility for our past employees and workers that might, you know, opt out and then realize, hey, I'm in the, you know...
Part of it is to spread the risk out over that covered life, though.
Yeah.
So, I'm feeling healthy, I'm 65, I'm great, so I go and get my own plan for five years, pay almost nothing.
Yeah.
And then I come back, I've paid nothing into the town's plan, and now I'm sick, so now I want you to cover all my stuff.
Yeah.
So it basically almost becomes like a risk pool.
That's true, that's a, yeah, yeah. So maybe, it would have been, you know, maybe something to discuss in further, but maybe it's like, you only have that time cap.
Time cap, you got, you got a year, if you left to come back, and that's the, that's the window, and you know, if you don't come back within that year, then, you know, the door's closed.
Let's tease that out, get pros and cons, and then put it, it's your select board policy, so it's on the books.
I'm just thinking of that person that might make that mistake, and, you know, but I get to the point, you don't want to have someone gone for 10 years and then come back in, jumps in the pool, and, you know, now it goes in the wrong direction, you know, for us, but I'm just thinking of that one year thing, something to chew on or whatever.
Because we are rated based on our losses.
Yep.
If we become, yeah, it turns into an engine after a while, we want the, we want folks to be with us, so.
Also affects OPEP as well. We have a strict policy, and what our policy provides for is the OPEP valuation as well. People are educated, our employees are educated, we meet with the employee when they're exiting, so they're well aware of what the policy is.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I, I don't think any retiree who has retiree first, that, that combination, it's the plan they speak highly of.
Okay, good.
You know, so I don't know that they're going to leave for that, but there's other things to consider, just...
Yeah, I mean, in the insurance industry and stuff like that, there's always these teasers out there, right? And it looks great, you know what I mean, and so someone might be like, oh, and not realize that they're, that half the things that they had, the security blanket that they had is no longer there in the, in the situation. That's all I was thinking of.
We do have an exit conference.
Okay, okay.
That goes through the benefits and is well aware of what they have.
Okay, that helps.
If I were advising retirees, I'd say really drill down on the pharmaceutical coverage, and make sure that you know what the difference would be. If you want to go on the exchange, it may not be the same formulary, you know, things may be in different tiers, and there would be different co-chairs for different tiers, so, food for thought. So that's that part of my update. I've got a lot to cover, I don't want to get into too much detail, I'll stop after each item, and you can ask questions if you want. We took the initiative as a town to kind of force the issue on the replacement of the dry stack stone culvert over here on Depot Street. The contractor was supposed to have recruited a quote-unquote qualified subcontractor, stonemason, to do this work, and it was part of their overall bid, and they bid $70,000, which was substantially lower than the engineer's estimate. We took the initiative as a town, we just got impatient, and finally said, you know what, it's our, it's our road, we're the client, engineering firm's not doing squat, the contractor's not doing squat, they came up with some guy who does stone walls for flower gardens out of some town north of here. That's not what we're doing, we have a sewer pipe crossing a body of water, it's got to be a legitimate qualified mason. So, we made that decision and kind of sent Mr. Monerik out to start doing the bird dog work. He called the right person, who was able to come out here and look around, so the, the mason that works for the paving company, that, this paving here, Nosella, they also did a wonderful job in Gilboa Street, when they made a mistake, they came back to fix it at their own expense, and...
It's huge.
So, they have a very good culvert person who was actually involved in a competitive, not Seen-Autens bid, but the next highest, the next lowest bid, and came out and said, you know, this is how this project can work, and I think I can almost hit the 70 grand, between 70 and 100 grand, but the most important thing is qualified and able to do the work. So, Conservation Commission this week approved some minor modification that we made to the design, so that, the key issue for this culvert, the reason why it failed was because it's a dry stack system and water cut in behind it and pushed it out. So, we're going to backfill now with crushed stone and geofabric, and then we'll have riprap running along the side, so that we're capturing all of the runoff that's been focused, and slowing it down, spreading it out before it gets to the water, so that won't undermine the underpinnings of the culvert. So, long story short, I think we're still going to be on schedule to do this work in the winter. The culvert will go through a full freeze thaw cycle, and we'll be ready to be paved in the spring, so I think it was the right, the right thing to do, because the general contractor wasn't getting it done. So I had updated the board on that through email, and that's your concluding update. So, if they hit the price, then they won't even need a change order, and I won't have to sign off on anything to that effect. Getting back to the financial position of the town, we certified free cash, I'm going to round the number up to an easy to talk about number, at 3.5 million, which is still a very good number. Last year we were over 4, closer to 4.5. Couple of things I want everybody to remember, town meeting approved... Town meeting approved eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for purchase of real estate that we are not going to purchase, and none of the eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars was spent. So, that's still there in my mind. Maybe I'm thinking about it wrong, maybe Gene's going to yell at me. But really, the four seventy-five is still present. It's, at the moment, it's allocated by a town meeting vote to a project that's not going to happen. So, town meeting would have to act to reprogram those funds, but it's there, there's eight seventy-five there. The other thing that did not happen this year that I expected to happen when we set the capital budget last year was the release of the overlay. So, we're holding over four hundred thousand dollars in the overlay because cubes at Gilboa challenged their valuation. And that was in an abundance of caution, that's what the assessor advised us to hold back. They've filed all their appeals timely, but the statistics are what drive the conclusion of the assessors and the Appellate Tax Board, the ATB. And frankly, our valuation is on the low end of other warehouse facilities very close by in the Blackstone Valley. So, there is really no way they could prevail against us for our valuation, there's no way. So, that's going to expire soon, but we have to hold the four hundred. So, there's, there's that, right? That's going to come back at some point.
So, you're saying that's one point two plus over and above means...
Yeah, so actually, we had a good result this year for, for free cash, and that was... And the other thing that is not factored into our balance sheet at all is any surplus we get back from MSHG as we wind out our relationship there. So, I'm not going to use the executive session, by the way. So, we can, we can skip that. As far as that goes, that conversation is still ongoing. I think we're at a point now where we're trying to agree on the methodology for the final value. And that issue is, there's on the balance sheet an align item called incurred but not reported. And under state law, we have to hold money in the trust fund in case there are claims out there that we know the care was given, but the claim hasn't come in yet. So, on your balance sheet, you typically hold between one month and two months worth of premium on your balance sheet, because you know you might have to spend that money out. Now, MSHG's a bunch of ding-dongs when it comes to finances. They blew through their IBNR, most groups don't have an IBNR, we do, ours is liquid. Here's the thing, we left, right? So, the runout of claims, all the claims we got after July first that were for the prior year, those are the claims incurred but not reported. Now, they've been reported and paid by MSHG.
Yep.
And deducted from our surplus. So, you got to take the IBNR line and get it off our balance sheet to correctly identify the surplus. And it's, you know, a hundred and nineteen, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so it's not chump change. So, that's the final methodological step. We're having some difficulty getting some people to understand this part of it, but I actually think after it's been explained by our CLA, our accountants that were retained for this, I think everybody will agree, and I'm very optimistic, just you can't have phantom account, can't count those claims twice, so we'll get it off. So, we have sent a letter that identified what we think the number is and how we got to it, and we are awaiting a response from them. The budget process is, is moving along. I'm adding the last two years of the five-year forecast, so every year, I have to update the spreadsheet because we move ahead a year, and last year, I didn't do it, so now I'm doing two extra. And, you know, this conversation around education expenses is going to be what turns the dime. So, I'm still holding a little bit of a, of a shortfall in my current mock-up. I'm pretty confident we'll get to a place where we can close that, if my assumptions about education are true. If they're not, we're in trouble. So, this is where, having this conversation, if we have twenty-five seniors at BBT, and we've been admitting forty, that's a delta of fifteen, so I'm going to lose twenty-five, when I pick up forty, that destroys us. So, if the conversation is, well, we're going to cap you at twenty-eight, well, it's not a perfect world. We'd like to see things leveled. So, then, the conversation will turn to their operating budget and how much of an increase are they asking for, basically on a per-head basis, for all their operating expenses, teacher salaries, health insurance, all building costs, operational building costs. So, we wait with bated breath on that. It's, that has not been unusual in the past for school bus transportation to be slightly lower the year after a big increase. That would save us, too. Like, that, we're all, we're within the realm of possibility here. What's not going to happen is, you know, we're not going to, health insurance isn't going to bail you out, staff turnover, you know, high-paid people being replaced by lower paid, that's not going to happen. So, we've identified some major channels where they've been programmed, and they're not going to change. So, that's pretty much where we are with the budget. I'll be sitting down with all the department heads and going through their expense budget very carefully, and probably that will be the month of November, just before Thanksgiving or just after Thanksgiving. So, I'm, I'm really trying to get something to the finance committee that's balanced and to you guys by January first. There will be unknowns.
Oh, yeah.
The health insurance renewal, the property casualty insurance renewal, the exact figure from Worcester Regional, although that often comes in, and BBT, those are the big wild cards that often come in, in March. So, whatever draft we have on January first will be subject to change. What am I forgetting, Lisa? I know, I'm forgetting all kinds of stuff, not forgetting, but just not highlighting.
Gleason Fork bid is due next Wednesday.
So, next Wednesday, we'll have the bids in, and we're going to organize the packages for you to start your review in the first meeting of November. So, it'll be in your packet so that you can read it. It's going to be kind of a lift. So, if, if the three groups that were all there for the tour, you're going to just have lots of things to consider, and it won't, again, it won't be apples to apples.
Yeah.
You're going to have, I think you're going to have three quite different proposals that will each have their ups, upside and downside. I'm assuming that you want it to stay here, you're not going to refer it to building facilities that you're going to... We've already been through that.
Yeah, no.
And we'll come here.
Yep, yep.
So, we'll have to discuss what the schedule is for scoring. And it doesn't have to be done this way, it often is. The real estate's a little bit different than an RFP. You can open the price right away, or you can hold it back, you can rate all the proposals, and then open the price at the end. That's kind of your choice on how you want to go about doing that. Because the proposal that's ranked third might end up being the highest price, and you'll sit here and scratch your, scratch your...
Want to know what we're talking about.
Not for nothing, it's so close to the schools that I really think you should just... As long as the price is over the floor price,
Yeah.
my recommendation to you would be to accept the price for the proposal that you feel works best in that school environment, right next to the primary school, right next to the senior center. That's going to be, might be your best guide to...
Did you get the walkthrough yet?
No, as I sit here, I was like, oh, yeah, that's something we wanted to do.
You kind of slipped my mind, too, because I would like to walk through.
So, Adam did not go away on vacation, so he's around, we can arrange it as it goes.
Yeah, I'm open at any time, so whatever works for you, Tim.
Thank you, yeah, this week's much better for me than previous. Or even next week's fine, I'm...
Yeah, same, I just...
Take one more stroll through the old girl.
Imagine, imagine the potential. I think that second floor...
What's that?
The second floor of that building, if you can imagine what it would look like with all the windows open to sunlight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's pretty spectacular.
Since we're on that subject, too, I did, I did drive by there, and I saw two guys from, who probably were out there when they're in the walkthrough that you did with Adam and company, and they were back there again, walking around the outside, which was, you know, I didn't stop and talk, or like, I just drove by. I was like, you know, two straight, you know, two guys that were remeasuring or looking at or had a vision or whatever, which was positive.
The second visit's always an indication of true interest.
Yeah, so I thought that was positive.
That's what I got for you for these last two weeks. I was at a conference today, municipal law update. Lots of cases have been decided by the Supreme Judicial Court, the appellate courts, very technical stuff, gene kind of stuff. But nothing earth-shattering. I think we've, we've successfully navigated some of the issues that other towns have ended up in litigation over, and we've learned from them and avoided that outcome. I think residents of Douglas should thank their lucky stars every single day that you are not an MBTA zoning community, because that really got rammed through, and it's really been disruptive, and there's been a lot of litigation around the issue. You don't have to face that, so...
Take a state park every day.
You want the forest and the pilot, you're slicing the pilot pie every day of being an MBTA community.
Yeah, yeah, those four or five-story buildings and mega, mega apartment complexes.
I don't even recognize the town of Franklin, I grew up next door, Cumberland, and I drive through Franklin, I don't even know where I am.
Oh, just on the, Bellingham, Bellingham got, you know, I mean, that whole park that used to be Automotive and Mulch Park right next to Forge Park, you know, is now all six units in there. So, you know, right in there, so...
It's a, it's a big change for a community.
Yeah, so...
That's all I got, unless anybody has any questions.
Questions, questions? We have the upped in, the animal inspector person.
He's on board.
On board, perfect.
Has he got his book, I assume?
Cool.
I think he's been doing inspections.
Cool, that's it, yeah.
Showed his face around.
That's excellent, all right. All right, good deal. Next item, any anticipated articles forty-eight hours in advance, roundtable discussion, anything? All's good. I can tell you that, just how they put it on here, but I did go see the town common, and there's quite a few entries there, just worthwhile, couple SpongeBob's. I did not see any smiley faces, Gene. I was a little disappointed on that, you know what I mean? Thought there would be at least someone that would put that out there.
There's two ice cream ladies, though.
I did vote, I did, I did, I did get, I did, my arm twisted to vote. You know, so, yeah, yep.
Who can grow the biggest?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are always...
You can roll it down Main Street, too.
Behind a horse.
Yeah. Keen, New Ham... So, Keen, New Hampshire does, essentially, aren't pumpkins. Giveaway pumpkins, and you can carve them, and then place them around the town wherever you want. They do a big pumpkin fest. People drove from Rhode Island all the way up to New Hampshire to carve pumpkins for the day.
That's wicked fun, that's what we'd say.
Yeah, so, I was like, so...
New Hampshire, that's wicked fun.
Yeah, but they drove from, from Rhode Island all the way up, so, all right.
I will say, the first time, I didn't even know there was a town in Massachusetts named Oxford.
Yeah.
And I think my son, Arden, was two or three years old. They had a huge pumpkin thing at their, I think it was a golf course on the Oxford, or a large park. They had thousands of them, like they do at Roger Williams Zoo, only it was in Oxford. So, we actually navigated all the way to Oxford from Cumberland, it was quite the thing.
No passport required.
In the dock, no passport.
No passport required. All right, entertaining motion to adjourn? All right, motion by Ross, second by Hal, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for the time.
Save your...